Okay, so welcome everyone to the Racial Equity and Policing Commission meeting on Thursday, January 11th, and I call this meeting to order at 5:36 PM. So first, we will begin with roll call. So I will have all of the commissioners introduce themselves, followed by SLCPD, and then Maria and I will go last. So commissioners, let's just start with Commissioner Satini. Sorry, she does not have a voice. So Commissioner Satini is present on the line. We'll go to Commissioner Summerfield.
Present.
Commissioner Kawapalu.
Present.
Commissioner Durante.
Present.
And Commissioner Wessel.
Present.
Okay. Then SLCPD, I'll just have you all say your names for the record.
Mike Hatch.
Lieutenant Andrew Clough.
And Chief Mike Brown.
Okay, thank you.
Then Maria Romero, Executive Assistant, and Michelle Mooney, Equity Manager for the Salt Lake City Mayor's Office.
So we'll start off with our open dialogue. If any commissioners want to raise any topics during this portion of the meeting, commissioners may raise topics and discuss current events that may impact or influence the commissioners' overall or the commission's overall work, discussions, and deliberations to provide recommendations to the mayor and city council regarding the Salt Lake City Police Department's policies, budget, and culture. No action will be taken during this section of the meeting. Matters discussed during this section of the meeting may be scheduled on a subsequent agenda for follow-up. So with that, does any commissioners have anything for open dialogue? Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I'm assuming no commissioners have anything for open dialogue. I want to recognize the commissioners that entered the space. So Commissioner Calvert, we have you present here. And... Can you hear us, okay? Yeah, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. And then I'll have you say your name for the record.
I can't hear you, can you?
Well, I can't hear Commissioner. Well, everyone's muted right now, for the most part. So I'll have you say your name, just... Go ahead. Your full name. For the record, yes. Because it's recorded already.
Tanya Hawkins. Present.
And then, I don't know... Let's see. Commissioner Guadorama, is that you with the cellphone number on?
Yeah, I'm on the phone. On the phone, Mike.
Okay.
Hello, everybody.
I'm just gonna rename you here, just so we can have that. Okay. Commissioner Calvert, are you still figuring out your mic situation? I can't hear you.
Okay, there we go, we got it. Was it on my...? Oh, no, I was just checking the camera if it's working. Just under a...
Okay. Did you want to just try and leave really quickly and then come back into the room? I don't know. Okay.
Nothing.
So I'm gonna move along with the agenda. Just let me know if your mic's not working, then chat with me if you need to say something, just so I don't disregard anything. We don't have any guests from the public in attendance, in person or virtually, so we will skip public comment and we'll move into the approval and adoption of the November 2023 minutes. So with that, can I have a motion to adopt and approve the minutes?
I'll move to adopt the minutes.
I'll second.
Commissioner Tanya Hawkins. And was that second by Commissioner Wessel?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Okay, all in favor, if you do have your camera off, just so we can be ethical about this, please raise a virtual hand and let me know that you're agreeing to approve and adopt the minutes. Or say aye.
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 Okay. Perfect. So all in favor to approve and adopt the November 2023 minutes. Okay, next, we're going to move into the SLCPD chief update. I can give sharing screen capabilities to Lieutenant Clough or Chief Brown, if you have something formal. Or both, both of you all.
No slides today for us, the chief of state, and then I'll present you.
Okay.
Yeah, good evening commissioners, good to see everyone. Hey, we wanted to, we were asked to report back, a report to the commission on our community outreach meetings that we have and the status and where we're at, what we've been doing. We actually have one, two, three, four, five, five different community outreach meetings, the first of which is Latino Coalition. They meet on a monthly basis. They meet the second Wednesday of every month at 5:30, usually at the Sorenson Center at 1300 West, 900 South. That group is headed up by Captain Derek Diamond, and they've been having meetings consistently for probably the last two, three years. A good group, very strong, very engaged with the police department and our community. So that is the first one. The second group is the LGBTQ+ community. That is headed up by Captain Zayas. They had a meeting, I believe, two months ago. They had another one, it was the week of Thanksgiving, and it, there wasn't a lot of participation, probably because of the holiday. I think they're looking to meet sometime next month. Time and location, I'm not sure. I was told it's either at the Pride Center or at the Salt Lake City Police Department. The next group would be the National Hawaiian Pacific Islander Group. That's gonna be headed up by Captain Smalley. Again, we're trying to get this group assembled and put together. I talked to Fahina, who's with National Tongan American Society yesterday, and she is excited to get going. So we'll get a group and get a time and a location that we can report back to you. Michelle, you can put it out to the commission before our next meeting, so we can let people know where we're meeting, and if they'd like to join us, they can do that. The next group would be the African-American community. It'll be headed up by Captain Bennett. I talked to Pastor Moses yesterday of Calvary Baptist Church. He has an outreach coordinator. We've been trying to talk today, but I'm, we'll, I think this is gonna be a good partnership. We'll probably be meeting at the Calvary Baptist Church. So Captain Bennett, like I said, will be heading that up. We'll be able to report more times, locations, and the date of the week that will that group be meeting. And then the refugee community is gonna be headed up by Captain Goodman. We've been working on getting a contact within that community, and we reached out to UHP, who has a group that they're meeting with, and they would love for us to participate and work with them. So again, we're in the infancy of starting that group. I'll have more information, Michelle, that I can send to you that you can put out to the commissioners, and like I said, these meetings are open to anyone. If they'd like to come and join and participate, love to have some of the commissioners join as well. But with that, any questions for me on our community meetings right now?
Chief Brown, if you're still looking for somebody in the refugee community, I believe that either the October or November Human Rights Commission meeting, there were some presenters from the Sudanese to Sephora that were very interested in getting more active and more involved. I believe Michelle Mooney might be able to put you in touch with them.
That'd be great. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, Michelle, if you'll pass that along, we can make sure that they're invited, and they can start participating in that group as soon as we find the time and location.
Okay, should I send that information all to you then, Chief, or is it still Detective Hadlock, the outreach officer?
No, send it to me, and I'll make sure it gets to the right people.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna turn the time over to Lieutenant Clough. He's gonna talk a little bit about our training component, where we're at, and how we're gonna start that as well. So Andy, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you commissioners for allowing me to be here tonight. I just wanted to give you a quick update on our diversity, equity, and inclusion training that we began quite a while ago. So we have been approved, and the purchase orders have been issued for the video by retired Chief Daniel Han, sorry, out of San Diego Police Department. He is doing our history and policing, and that... He's already produced the video. He sent it to us, so we have access to it. I've been working with our training unit. The plan is to roll that out here in this first trimester of the year, between January and April of this year. Through our, we have an Akatus Training Portal, so every officer will be responsible for viewing that video through that portal, and they'll have access to it throughout that entire period. The other training that we've been approved for is the LGBTQ+ community training that Olivia Harameo is putting on for us. One-hour training about the LGBTQ+ community, what resources are available, how officers can interact with that community. I'm still working on a time for them to come and offer that training to our officers. Currently, our first and second trimesters are already booked out for our training unit with mandatory trainings that we have to do for certification for firearms, de-escalation, arrest controls, and mental health trainings that we're putting on. And so it's looking more likely that it's gonna be in our third trimester of training, starting in July, August, September, when we'll be able to slot that in. I've been working really closely with Olivia and her assistant Alex to be able to schedule that. I'll give you an update as soon as we have a firm date nailed down on that. The other two trainings are for African-American community group and Latino community group in that same group, they're gonna be trained together. And then our Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander community group as well. The bids came in a little high, and they required that we do a separate RFP for both of those. It's currently with purchasing to see what they need from us to produce that RFP. I'll get back with you again as soon as I get any updates from them on that process. But we are moving forward. Hopefully, we'll have at least two of those community trainings going out to all of our officers here in the next six or seven months, and we'll be able to report back on that. I did view the video myself that Chief Han had sent over, and it gives a very comprehensive look at racism in America, historically, how police have been asked to take a very forward approach, not necessarily towards racism, but how we've been used as the sphere of enforcement, and how that has negatively impacted some of our communities around the nation, and then things that we can do to start building those, it's with the community that may have been event. It's a pretty good video. Looking forward to feedback from our officers and how that's received. Are there any questions for me about those four trainings?
My only question would be, is someone working directly with purchasing or was just the same, like, what do they need basically from our end? Or is it...?
As far as I know, I think they have everything that they need from us. Our finance director, Shelley Dietrich, is working directly with purchasing. I just haven't heard back from them, and with it being the new year and the holidays, I'll check back within this week and see if we can't get an update.
Okay. And then, just in case you all have to hop off, I did want to let you know that all of the budgetary letters of support are done. So as you all are working on budgets, please keep that in mind of the request from the commission, as well as they wrote a letter of support for the leadership trainings that SLCPD requested in November. So I will get that to you both, so that you have those letters of support. Right now, just Rachel is reviewing it, but I wanted to get it at the forefront of your mind, since I know that budgets are being submitted soon.
Yep, that's fantastic. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. Does any commissioners have any questions about those updates?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into the next topic, so just the year overview. Remember that we did cut our meetings down in half. So at the bottom of this agenda, you will see when we're having meetings. So please remember, either review this, or I will update the calendar invites. I just didn't cancel anything yet with our general meetings, because a lot of times when I cancel things, people sometimes get confused that it's the meeting that's actually happening. So we won't have a meeting next month, and we'll meet again back in March. This is for our open and public meetings. So as we're thinking of the 2024 year, we will have less meetings. However, we will still be working with the assigned officers, and I'll make sure that I have the most up-to-date list for that, so that you all, as commissioners, can work on these different priorities and tasks with those officers. So while we don't have the subcommittees, there were officers assigned to different tasks. So I'll make sure that I have that updated list, get that to you all. The only subcommittee that is reoccurring is gonna be our Neurodiversity, Sensory Needs Subcommittee, that's with Deputy Chief Andrew Wright, as well as with the Accessibility and Disability Commission, as well as the members from our commission. If you're not already on that committee, subcommittee, and you wanted to join, please let me know. Otherwise, that is the only subcommittee. Now, I'm gonna just share my screen here, and we're gonna review the report. Let me just pull this up here. We're gonna review the report that was voted upon. I was able to clean it up, as well as include all of the budgetary letters of support that were signed by the chair and vice chair of the last year. And actually, we're gonna, okay, before we go into the reports, since that's the longest thing on our agenda, and just assigning those roles, I did want to open up the floor for any nominations for a chair and vice chair, if you would like to put your name in the running. If not, the current chair and vice chair are happy to continue. However, we will go through formal voting procedures to do that. So if anyone else was interested in being chair or vice chair, please raise your hand, let me know. Is there anyone? I just want, if there's anyone, I mean, I know Commissioner Wessel just ended his two-year chair by surrender with the HRC, so I'm sure he's happy to have a break.
Yeah, no one's tricking me into that again.
Oh, man, seriously?
Okay, and this is everyone's opportunity. So we will go into formal voting procedures. Is there a motion on the floor to remain with Tanya Hawkins as chair and Lysia Satini as vice chair for the 2024 year?
Motion to nominate Tanya Hawkins as chair, and motion to nominate Lysia Satini as vice chair.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wessel, second by Commissioner Durante. Okay, all in favor, please raise your virtual hand, your hand, or say aye.
Aye. Oh, I can't.
Okay, you can.
Okay.
I can, because I'm in the meeting right now, but yes. Okay. I believe that's an unanimous decision, so all are in favor. We will remain with the same chair and vice chair for the 2024 year. With that, we do have Commissioner Hawkins, who did renew their term. So Commissioner Hawkins, you'll see at least till for two years, so this year and the next. Commissioner Satini's term is ending this year unless she renews, which I'll give her the year to decide on that. But I just want to say that early enough, because a lot of you new commissioners, I just want you all to be mindful of that, being a chair or vice chair, that may be an opportunity for you as well. I know sometimes it seems scary when you're new, but if you talk with anybody who's been a chair or vice chair for any of the commissions, they'll let you know I'm pretty relaxed on what I expect of you all, but it's easier to make decisions with a chair and vice chair. They're also quick to review the applications that come in, because they come in at different times. And then we have bi-weekly meetings for the most part, unless I cancel otherwise, which many meetings, if we don't need to have one, we won't have one. Okay, so let me pull up this report, and this will be the last thing. Hi, you made it in person! Okay. Yes, Commissioner Guadorama entered in person, so we'll have her here in the camera now. Okay. So this is the final report. It's final and approved by you all, however, it still has to go in front of... It has to go in front of my office, which it is with Rachel and the mayor currently. And then I'll be able to present it to city council, I believe, in this quarter, so either February or March for the equity update. So here, you'll see some changes. We did get our chair and vice chair message up, ready to go. And I'll send this to you all as well, because this is very small. But what I do want to focus on is that we will need to start assigning tasks to individual commissioners. And while we're thinking of that, too, I do want to say that we will become a full commission, hoping that everyone that has been supported by the chair and vice chair gets confirmed through city council and their interview. So we should be running at a full commission. We currently have eight people, or seven people, and we get to bring on eight. Or no, vice president. It's eight, we currently have eight people, and then we're gonna bring on seven people. So with that, we will still have a retreat, and I'll make sure that we get those dates on the books early. I just want to gauge what month, but I'll send that in all in an email, just so I can kind of gauge what month you want to have the retreat. I think it'll be good to kind of get the new commissioners up to speed, but I'll have their orientation kind of separately, and then we'll have the retreat with everyone like we did last year. Okay. So we will start, since this is all, we'll just look at the 2024 priorities, goals and priorities, which some of them do come from 2023. The biggest things that I know that will be a heavy lift for this year will be, where is it? It's gonna be the implied bias survey. So the implied bias survey, this will be something that's conducted for SLCPD, so we would need to, the commission will need to do research in terms of who will be able to facilitate this survey and making sure that we have the metrics for that. It will be a heavy lift, so I'm thinking to have probably two to three commissioners on this. Maybe at least one from this current group, if not two, and then one of the new commissioners can come onboard with this one. But this is one that's been ongoing, I mean, not yet completed since the start of the commission, so it would be pretty good to get this moving.
Oh, I'll take that.
You want to?
Yeah.
Okay. So Commissioner Hawkins, I'm just gonna exit this screen really quickly.
I'll volunteer as well.
Perfect. I will write that down. So I have you both, I'll probably put a new commissioner on. Again, I'd just rather have all you all are the point people. I know it kind of feels like the subcommittee in a way, but we would just probably have to meet. I feel like it still will be individual work, but I will touch base with you all on what this looks like, because we really have to think about this. This is the last thing for phase one, which is that biggest report. Everything coming on reports from 2022 fourth, that's kind of our phase two. And we are finding success with that as well already. By organizing an in-person retreat, we were able to do that. We were able to partner with the ADC to facilitate a neurodiversity subcommittee. So those things are getting ready to roll out. I know some of the things are attending the community meetings facilitated by SLCPD, which is why I had them provide an update today. So I will make sure that I work with Chief Brown to get those dates, because right now, I only know that the Latino Coalition happens on the first Wednesday, and that's the only calendar invite I'm on. So I will forward that calendar invite. I don't know how you all want it to work. Do you all want me to send you the dates in an email? Or do you want to be, I'm on every single invite to make sure I know that it's happening, but I don't know...
I would, personally, I would rather receive invites emails.
For every single thing?
Yeah.
And you go to every single one?
That way you get to choose which one you want to go to. And we have, we are able.
Yeah, I would too. If we decide that we're interested in more in one than the other, then we decide which one we go to. And then if we feel like we're not interested in certain ones, then we could at least tell you, remove me from this one.
Okay.
Send me.
That does make sense, and I think based on that... So these groups were, so the NHPI one, I know was a strong-standing group with the Latino Coalition. So I will just touch base. Clearly, you all, as commissioners, you all are part of these communities, right? So if you see a way that this can be successful, this is your opportunity as leaders in this commission to provide insight. Because it seems like they kind of are rolling, kind of not, except for the Latino Coalition. So in these meetings, we will, as a commission, need to determine metrics that you all are measuring when you're going to those meetings, so it doesn't feel like you're just going to these meetings as a constituent. You should be going to these meetings as a leader in this work, and as a commissioner, and providing feedback, collaborative feedback with the SLCPD team on how these meetings can be run better or effectively. I haven't been to one, but some feedback shows that it can just develop and it can just grow, just with everything else. So I know the diversity of all of you commissioners is very needed in these spaces, but I want you all to have that open mind when you go, to have that mindset when you go, like, okay, how can we improve this space? Maybe the dialogue wasn't as effective between SLCPD and the constituents that come. So how can you all, having this collaborative relationship in this space, help develop that? But again, it is on the work of SLCPD for those ones. The ones that are led by you all will be the community listening sessions. will be, um, the community listening sessions. So I will need, so for this, just to make it digestible, my idea was to have one in the spring and one in the fall. So we have some time till, you know, it's technically spring. So maybe we can shoot for, uh, we don't have an April meeting and we don't, and I know June goes into summer. So maybe if we can shoot for April, that would be good, um, but I do need commissioners to take the lead on that. Um, just so you kind of have an idea, the Human Rights Commission is starting community forums as well, and they're work, they're partnering with the Westside Coalition for their first one. Um, in February, and I think it's, it's gonna be a really successful event based on the partnership that they had. So I know that this is led by the R E P commissioners, but whoever decides to head this up, definitely think of what partners, if, if we're focusing on a, a specific issue or a specific community, what partners can we have included in these conversations to make this partnership bigger? And then we can also get insight from past commissioners of how they held these listening sessions before. So is there anybody from the commission who's interested in working on the community listening sessions first, um, for either the spring or fall? It'll just be a team and then I'll, I'll reach out to you separately to ma- to see who can plan the spring one, who can plan the fall one.
I'm interested in being involved with one of them.
Okay. Commissioner Wessel.
I, I would be interested as well.
Okay. Hey, Commissioner Calver, I know we're having some mic problems and so I'm just making sure we get that. Okay. Okay, so we'll start there, cuz like I said, we will be bringing on new commissioners, so it'll be good for them to come onboard. So I have that. Okay. I'm just making sure, I'll, other than that, everything else seems, I still have the same, um, subcommittee members for the neurodiversity subcommittee, like I said, unless you wanna be on it, then let me know. Um, Commissioner Satini, just so you all are aware, Commissioner Satini will be working on, or working with Jennifer Newell, and there's an oversight committee for the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding. So as part of that M O U, they made sure that there was a oversight committee and they need twice a year, one in the fall, one in the spring, so Commissioner Satini is the R E P commissioner on that. Just so we are all aware of that. And then in terms of attending the community meetings hosted and facilitated by S O C P D, you all can be a part of that. I'll make sure that I get the invites. And right now I can forward you for sure the Latino Coalition, cuz we do have that, yesterday they canceled due to the snow. Um, and it was a worse day than today, so definitely that was the best move. But they do, that meeting I know is running monthly.
Is it just, um, in person?
Yes, that one, yes, so I believe all their meetings should be in person. But right now I only had the dates for the Latino Coalition, like I didn't know that L G B T Q was meeting.
Yeah, neither.
So that's, that's what I'm saying, uh, just a better communication, cuz um, and, yeah, being in the loop of that. So that's what I'm saying, you're, you know, you used to work with the Pride Center, that seems like something.
That we should know about, yeah.
Yes, and then we have many, I'm, well now, we lost some of our P I community, but we still have Commissioner Satini and Commissioner Cavapalu, I think they should be in the loop of those types of things as leaders in the, so we'll just make sure that you all are involved. Um, because I, I know that you all are leaders in your communities, so we wanna make sure that S O C P D has success with this too, so having.
And with veteran offices too.
Yes, yeah, for the, for the, um, black community, right? So this was all new updates as of, what you all heard, yes.
Happy to hear what you're doing.
Yes.
I just, be nice to be.
Included in conversations to help.
I, I appreciate you reaching out to them and.
Getting that updated, okay. Yes, I did know that was something that was very much expressed, so I wanted to make sure that we're in the loop about that.
Yeah.
So those are the biggest things, as I'm looking at this, nothing else really needs commissioners onboard. Oh, yes, let me go back to this one. So these are all of the So if we start from the top here. And I'll zoom in.
And that one you'll send to us.
Yes, I will send this to you once it's the fi- well, I can send this to you now, it's just a draft, so just please make sure not to share out. Clearly, we're on a public meeting, so it's recorded, but, um, just, yes, this document's just not official, but it's pretty much, this is the most finalized copy that I gave to Mayor and Rachel in my office, and then we'll present it to city council for the equity update. And I'll let you all know too, just in case you all wanna attend or be there to support. But here you can see that I made all of the updates of the recommendations completed, this was based on Chief's last presentation in November, so I added everything up to twenty twenty three. And then, um, the nine-on-one script on mental health, I'll follow up with that, I know that P D said they'll work with S L C um, dispatch on that, or nine-on-one dispatch on this as well. Um, and as we know, the training based on hi- the history of policing is also in the works. So based on that timeframe, based on what they were saying, it seems like they won't even get that training done.
Till like.
If the first and second trimester is already filled, then they probably wouldn't do that till the end of the year, yeah.
October, or see, June or October.
Right.
Right? July, July was, yeah, July or October.
Right, so actually that is where I will need. So is anybody, so this, so for the training, right, so the officers can go through the training, but I think what we're missing is the metrics behind it. I have done a training with Equality Utah, I haven't seen their metrics behind it, but I think it would be nice to have a point person. I know more of the metrics piece was coming from, um, True Empowering, they have that piece in there. Some of them just didn't include like the full package, and what's important is we all, we all know, right, S O C P D, anybody can go through any training, but it, it's the fact that what happens after. So, and how do we know that this is a good training that we would wanna, um, fight for funding for this to be institutionalized, or whatever the case may be, on what you all are thinking as the commission of what you wanna see this training be after this one-and-done kind of time from the, the, the non-departmental funds? Um, so is there anybody who is passionate about either looking at, um, training evaluation, or just looking at just metrics in general and the success of a program? And seeing that through, I don't, like I said, I don't know what that looks like, I have to talk with the consultants and see if they have their own, so I see Commissioner Duranti.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Summerfield.
And I can too.
Okay, let's.
Does that make sense?
What?
I get part of it cuz I've been on CAP and this side, so, yeah.
Oh, okay. So Commissioner Duranti, Summerfield, Hawkins, I'm just. I'll put this into my own notes after.
You're good.
Okay. So I have you all there. And then of course, um, the expertise of the hopefully the, the potential new commissioners, I think they will bring a lot of new insight, there, there is um, an applicant who is a former police officer, um, two actually, two actually, with, with different cultural backgrounds, so I think that would be, bring unique insight. And we are also bringing on more youth commissioners as well, um.
Did you already close that, um, positions? Yeah.
Yeah, for this year, well, not close, it's always ongoing, yeah.
Do you always have some to apply?
Yes.
Yeah, cuz you never know.
Yeah, please always encourage people to apply, the turnover rate for commissions, I mean, I think it's more manageable cuz these are two-year terms. But please always encourage people to apply, I can include that link. But this year we had probably the most applications that I've seen.
It's amazing, and really good people.
Really good people, really good applicants.
Yes.
So we don't have spots for everyone, so, um, yes, and then other than that, I think, so I have commissioners for the listening sessions. This will just be all commissioners, and I'll make sure you all are on that. Okay, I know this was a big thing, reviewing the current structure of the civilian review board. I don't know if that was part of our original recommendations, probably not, that might have been a phase two thing.
I think, yeah, I don't, it wasn't part of phase one.
Is anybody passionate about that, that, um, topic? So we do have a civilian review board, um, that, and I do have the point of context, I'm hoping to bring them in for a pre- presentation ac- actually to one of our meetings, so maybe I should plan that for March.
Yeah, I see, yeah, cuz that way you get a better picture, so what would that person be doing, I mean?
This.
Give you the whole structure of the review board or?
Yes, I think if I remember right, this is very much, um, this sounds like, um, former Commissioner Salazar Hall, I feel like she definitely it sounds like one of her insights and inputs for this, but.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, and we got to ask.
Yes. Yes, so I will, so that is open if anyone is interested in that.
I, I am interested in the civilian review board, but my understanding is the legislature basically hamstrung the ability for civilian review boards to basically change their structure, uh, so
Oh.
I, I don't believe that there's very much leeway for civilian review boards, uh, I could be wrong, I just recalled that was a big topic a few years ago, uh, during a legislative session and they, because Salt Lake City was trying to move forward and change the civilian re- review board to have some kind of, uh, more power.
Uh, yeah.
Legislature came in and undercut it and passed some laws that said that municipalities cannot do that, so I don't know, um, it might, might be worth looking into a little bit before we go too far down the road of looking into something that can't be changed.
Okay, so Commissioner Wessel, would I be able to task you with that? In the meantime, if you can look into if this can even be something that's done, for right now, just very preliminary research?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it, I mean, you, we can look into how it's structured, it's just that we could, if we could come up with a hundred different recommendations of what would be better practices, it may not be able to implement any better practices because of uh, state law that got, that, that got adopted, so, but anyway, I'll, I'll look into it and then.
Yes, let's start with that then, let's start i- if this is even a possibility and where, um, where it is in, I guess, that status. Cuz this is definitely an, a recommendation you said a few years ago, this was probably on for a while, but not part of the original ones, yeah. Okay, Commissioner Summerfield, you have your hand raised.
I was gonna say, like, if it is feasible, I would be interested in like getting involved with it, but it does seem like a little bit up for speculation and whatnot. But, um, if it, if the civilian board is, um, you know, feasible, I'd, I'd hypothetically be interested.
Okay, I'll keep you here for now, we'll start off with um, Commissioner Wessel's research on that, if this is feasible, and then if we need to, before finalizing this, um, if nothing can be done, then you all can make that decision to, to remove this out of the recommendations or the priorities. Um, just looking to some other things that so what I'm hoping for is that in the past, I know we did have, at the time it was Carlos Sabuco, and maybe some of the past commissioners remember this, the chief probation officer in the juvenile court system, um, I think having that partnership with the courts, I know that's more so state, however, just seeing what, what more you all can do in terms of the work with policing
Yeah.
and overlap with the court system, cuz as we know, I mean, what happens, right, and then you all have the interest of the youth, the youth who go into the juvenile court system, so just thinking more about this, I will follow up to see if that is the same chief proba- probation officer. Um, and then I'll look at past presentations as well and see what they, they have done. Um, similarly to the parks, um, the park ranger program, at the time, the director was, um, they, they kind of had like no director for a little bit, so now they do have a director. I just have to look back on past minutes of what route the commission was going towards for at this time. Um, and in terms of school safety, I know some of the legislation in this session, um, Jennifer Newell made me aware some of them are regarding S R Os. I don't wanna misquote anything, but, um, she did want the commission to be aware that there are some things regarding that.
Can she send us, or can she send us like an email or something, just to give us a heads up on what to expect?
For the, I think she was just, like, do you wanna, yes, it's in this session right now.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Okay.
So I'm not sure who all is upkeeping with the legislative session, I know some of the commissioners usually do.
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to be as well for myself and just our work that we're doing here, um. Hey, I think, let's see. And then here, so that was everything we needed to talk about for that, I do know the budgetary allotment for mental health professionals for officers and staff, that's something I'll just have to follow up with S O C P D. I know that Chief mentioned in our November meeting that this can be worked on, but I know that with other priorities, I think he wanted to just kind of, um, keep it in this kind of incomplete until they're able to work on that. But what they will be working on hopefully with budget approvals, um, because it's one thing for them to submit a budget for things, and it's another thing to get approved through, um, city council. So we just wanna make sure that so everything, like I said, with the letters of supports for the professional development for school resource officers, as well as the negative police interactions and the culturally responsive therapy for victims and families, that will be an annual, so what, what the commission was requesting was an annual allocation, so in this report, it's very clear, so these are all of the append, or this is what's listed in the appendix, all of the reports, all of the updates from S O C P D and all of the presentations from our, um, presenters that are related to the budgetary letters of supports, so we will have, the D I trainings has been submitted because that was submitted early on last year when you all voted the first time around. And then we just had that hiccup. Um, the rest of these three will be sent to S O C P D to have, I'll probably resend this whole file, so they have it all in one email. But from my understanding, um, you all did agree from the C rep side, that the professional development for school resource officers, for all school resource officers, um, have an al- annual allocation for that and an annual allocation of twenty thousand dollars. That number again is from what Wendy Isom and Ashley Cleveland provided from the research of what this therapy costs. And it's twenty thousand dollars per year. And through their statistics again, um, usually it's about, it's just having this in place, so when negative police interactions happen, there's already money allocated to assist and support these families, and that they, we're not pulling money um, from anywhere. I do know during, I believe it was twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, the mayor's office did cover that first round. Um, that, and that's basically what Ashley Cleveland's presentation was on with Wendy Isom. And then, as you all remember, S O C P D asked the commission to support their attendance in specific leadership trainings, so that, that letter of support is here. And it's outlined with the specific, um, trainings they had from the update as well, from the November twenty twenty three update. So with that, that's everything here, um, I'll make sure to send a follow-up email. So with that, that's everything here, um, I'll make sure to send a follow-up email. With all of this information, let me just go to the agenda again, okay. So that is everything for the year overview, now that I have point people, um. We have our term by share, do you all have any questions for, for me? No questions, okay, pretty straightforward. Okay, just a reminder, if you're on the neurodiversity subcommittee, I still should have that calendar invite. Present, um, or available on your calendars, it is for. January twenty second, and uh, currently I have Commissioner Calvert on the invite, Commissioner Guadorama. And Commissioner Satini, and then I had um, Commissioner Mauga Sagato, but she also had, um. Her term ended at the, at last year, last year, so I'll remove her off, is there anybody? That is interested in that subcommittee as of now? Okay, perfect. So that's a subcommittee again, is the only one meeting, just because that is a partnership with the A D C, so they have about, um. Four, five of their commissioners on it, but I will open it up to the new commissioners once they get confirmed, if anybody wants to be on it. Um, this group does have very, very great momentum right now, um. So yes, and with um, former Commissioner Verona, we do wanna wish her the best of luck, she is running.
Yes.
She is running for the legislature, so I believe, is it House or Senate?
I wanna say House.
I wanna say House, yeah.
I think.
I think she's, she is running.
Yeah, I can't remember, I think.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Satini confirmed, so we do wanna wish her the best um, of luck for that, for sure. Okay, and then we won't need a tentative closed session. So we'll just again review the meeting dates for this year. Will be January eleventh, March fourteenth, May ninth, July eleven, September twelfth, and November fourteenth will be our last meeting. However, I'll see you all either virtually or in person, I'm hoping to really. Connect with all of the commissioners at least quarterly, but I will touch base with everyone at least monthly. Because we will have different things we're working on, but I'm hoping that you all are open to that. Um, meeting in person, I know I haven't got to meet all of you in person yet. So I do wanna make sure that those connections still stay strong, and we still will have our retreats, so you all can have face time with each other and. Um, just be intentional of trying to get together with the different commissioners on this work. Especially if you all can do in person, then please have an in-person meeting to plan stuff, um. I think there's power in connection, and we wanna keep that momentum going, even though we. We lost a bunch of our core commissioners.
Yes.
So I wanna make sure the, the momentum stays strong, because it's just important to have this commission and you all are doing important work, so. With that, if no one has anything, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn, maybe.
Okay, and then is there a second, I'm assuming you all, it's a slow day. Okay, so thank you all for your time, and we're ending thirty minutes early. I will touch base with you all, and please keep a lookout for my email, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.